They have in place, it makes a lot of sense from a standpoint of the information that's in there is, from what I gathered, something that is going to make sure that certain things are adhered to in the process. I know there was concern about ACLU and making sure that all of the ducks went aro from that standpoint. And from what I see, that policy does that.
Tom, did you have any?
I didn't. Chief, did we have, do we have a policy in place for our placement of cameras?
De'Antro, the chief of police, we don't. I've reviewed this policy and I like it. I think it addresses both sides of the coin with concerns from all.
So it'd be a good idea to maybe have some kind of policy before we start implementing?
Yes, I, I like that philosophy.
Well, and so would we, from a standpoint of if we did implement a policy like that, it would come before the full council, I'm, I'm thinking. And our city attorney would actually be looking at it, maybe changing some of the wording so that it fits our community as opposed to? I would assume so. I mean, theirs is an administrative policy. And I guess, I was thinking there's, I don't see a reason to necessarily go to the ordinance route. I don't know that this warrants that. But, yeah, we would obviously want to have the city attorney looking at it, getting his input on it. I did send him a copy of it, but I don't know that he's had a chance to review it. You know, looking at the document, it talks, I mean, I get the ACLU and the individual privacy. But as it talks in here, you know, that's what this is designed for is, and we're talking about in the public arena or the public area of the communities. As I understand it from talking to the chief in Dubuque, that they set this up so that it would be anything that an officer could see were he in the neighborhood. So it's, it's not going to be set up to be able to, you know, peek into houses or do that kind of stuff that an officer wouldn't be doing either. So I, you know, I understand how some of that stuff could be a little misconstrued or possibly taken advantage of, but it seems like, I think Dubuque's been doing this for quite a while. Again, they're, I think, years ahead of most of the rest of the communities because they had cable in the streets well before most other communities did. So they could take advantage of that. But I don't know, other council members, if you've had a chance, take a look at this. If anything in this document caught your eye or anything you wanted to talk about at this stage?
Not, no, not right now for me.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one of the things with the, with the documents, and it was, there were several different documents that were part of what was sent to me when I talked to Councilman Jones over there, like a month and a half ago. And one of the documents is, is called Making Dubuque a Safer Community. And, and on the left corner of the first page of that, it's a two-page document. And it, it addresses them, the city of Dubuque, setting up a, a task force called the Safe Community Task Force. And they developed different subcommittees, and the subcommittees, it explains in there, were built around the ideas of neighborhood engagement, social capital. Second thing, enforcement. Third, management of physical environment. And a fourth, research and facts. And this, this task force, as well as their subcommittees, worked over seventeen months, had thirty-five meetings, and then submitted a list of, and I'm sure you guys had this because I sent this, all this stuff to you guys, was, there was a list of sixty different recommendations that they made to the powers that be in Dubuque. And then they set this up as an ongoing commission. And I don't even know if that commission is still operating because when I checked today, the last minutes that I saw from that committee were from later twenty thirteen, so. And I haven't called over there or emailed Rick Jones since I saw that today about if that committee's still a standing committee or not. So, I mean, this took, Mr. Chairman, a good period of time to put together with a lot of different people, a lot of different groups within the city of Dubuque, within their structure, their committee structure, their standing committees. So it wasn't something that was just, you know, thought of and then they implemented.
I have a question, Council Morrisey. So do you think that from a standpoint of us as a city, we need to follow suit with that? Or just look at their best practices and follow those?
Well, Councilman Amos, Waterloo is different than Dubuque, definitely. Our demographics are different than Dubuque. And that's why I would believe that different groups within our community need to be involved in this and form something like they had over in Dubuque, but be all-inclusive of the different groups that want to be involved. That's my opinion. Councilman Amos.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say that I did look at it today, but there was seven pages to read and I got through about half of it. So it was quite a bit of reading. I don't really have an opinion until I go back and go through it.
Well, and I think what Councilman Morrisey is referring to is some of the, you know, some of the emails we got were, I think one of them was fifty-four pages long. But, but that fifty-four pages included the seven pages. And then, yeah, some other documents that may or may not warrant much of a conversation. But I do think that Waterloo and Dubuque are fairly similar. They've become more similar, I think, the last several years. And so I'd, I'd like to think that, I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Morrisey, about making sure we involve all the right people. I don't see any reason in the world why it would take us seventeen months because I think, you know, Dubuque's already done a lot of that for us. So I think a lot of the preliminary stuff, hopefully, we can learn from their experiences that, you know, last, the last meeting, I was going to ask to table this camera discussion for about thirty days because I was just looking at that purely from the MediaCom perspective to see whether or not we may be able to partner up with them to save some, save some of the cost of implementing this. But then I think Dan asked for sixty days, which gives us even more time to work on this. But did you happen to send a copy of this to Mr. Funches? Do you remember? Because if you didn't, I would say we certainly want to get it to him.
But I've taught, being, I'm the liaison, one of the liaisons with the Human Rights Commission. Abraham and myself have talked.
Okay. So he's aware of this?
Yes. He, I don't think, I don't know if he's got everything that we have here.
Okay, all right. But I did send it to City Attorney Zella from, just trying to think, you know, out loud who else we'd want to make sure we looped into this conversation from the city's perspective.
Well, one of the documents was from the city engineer over in Dubuque. And I'd, I'd say city engineer, traffic department, community, neighborhood association, whether it be Felicia or Mark Bosin, and definitely the Human Rights Commission, you know. Or something just off the top of my head, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lind, anything else?
I don't.
Okay, human, human rights, city attorney, neighborhood associations. Who else did you say? City engineer. I think city engineer and traffic would probably have to do with, depending how the conversation goes, with MediaCom. Obviously PD's involved.
Probably leisure services too, Steve.
Pardon me?
Leisure services, parks and that.
Or the park perspective?
Right.
So you, did everybody else get what they needed? Because if they didn't, I can make sure that we did.
That's material.
Right, right, okay. All right, well, I guess I would like to ask that, at least where is this subcommittee, take a look at this and maybe we can get a meeting set up with some of these other departments because I'd like to keep this ball rolling. So then depending on where we do go with either MediaCom or going back to the chief, getting the polls that he wanted or whatever, that we can get this implemented. Chief, just to be clear, do we currently have some cameras up? Is that correct?
We do, yes, sir.
Okay, so do, so we're, we have those up with no governing policy or no rules that we're operating by? Or help me understand that a little bit.
No, no.
All right, all right.
And MediaCom assists us with those. They move them for us.
Okay, okay. But as far as, I mean, some of this stuff, and have you had a chance to take a look at this yet?
I did, I do. I like this.
I mean, some of this has to do with, you know, who, who can review it and, and the privacy issues and, and that type of stuff. So right now, I mean, we're just kind of operating on good behavior or?
We operate under the code. We use them for criminal investigations. So if we would get a request for them, if it's an act of open investigation, we wouldn't release it. But once a case has been dispositioned, we would release it.
Okay. Anybody got anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Got it. A motion to second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm ready.
Let's call our finance committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the role, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Whopper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I move the minutes of October ninth as proposed and the agenda for today.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, and the agenda, minutes. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Under new business, looks like we have three travel requests and four refund requests. Somebody want to take that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that. Sam Hess and Ian Wass, paramedic firefighters to attend a class, tri-state emergency responder conference in Dubuque, Iowa, October twentieth. The amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Jason Hernandez, the fire department, attend a class. Iowa EMS Association Conference, destination is Des Moines, November ninth through the eleventh. Amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Tina Shellhorn, electrical foreman, Craig Hensman, signal technician two. Brandon Hodgkins, signal technician one, to attend a class in Davenport on November second through the third, amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then on request, refund request and the amount of two hundred and three dollars for garbage fees billed and air for the property located outside the service area at thirty-six fifty-two Barton Burton.
Tom, that was a nine cents.
No, I'm sorry, nine cents, yep. So it's two hundred and three dollars and nine cents for garbage fees. Refund request and the amount of sixty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for the property located at twenty-seven eighteen Falls Avenue for fees billed for the use of garbage can when they had a private hauler. Refund request and the amount of fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. Property located at thirty-one eleven Mulberry for fees billed for the use of the garbage can when they had a private hauler. And refund request and the amount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents for additional garbage fees billed and air for the property located at eleven twenty-one Mulberry.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, on the travel requests and the refunds. Any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those motions pass. Pre-oths?
Mr. Chairman, we have pre-othsations to expend over one thousand dollars. Airport, eighteen hundred forty-two dollars. Sand for use on runways, taxiways, and ramps to improve braking action. Culture and arts, fourteen hundred dollars. Advertising with Lamar for four billboards to promote Holiday Arts Festival. Leisure services, sixteen thousand three hundred twelve dollars ninety-four cents for new backstop netting for Riverfront Stadium. Planning zoning, thirty-two hundred dollars to survey the Marion Park west of Central Middle School. Planning zoning, twenty-six hundred sixty dollars. Asbestos survey sampling reporting for two sixteen to two twenty Commercial Street. Sewer department, seven thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars twelve cents plus four hundred dollar shipping handling for the flight pump repair parts and labor for one lagoon influent wet, wet well pump. Sewer department, two thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and five cents to purchase one rigid two-one-eight-nine-three Seek Tech SR twenty utility sewer locator. Sewer department, four thousand fifty dollars for one-year software renewals for two Granite premium support plans and one Granite Navideo basic support for C-MOM office computers. Street department, three thousand thirty-one dollars and sixty cents for a door for the John Deere loader, five-four-four K. Street department, not to exceed seven thousand dollars for repairs to be made on the John Deere five-four-four J end loader.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the pre-oths. Any of those raise questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and those are approved. Now, we have two budget line item amendments, amendments, which are on file at the city clerk's office. And the bills payment this week, two million nine hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and two cents. That's two comma nine three zero comma nine nine seven point zero two. Motion, a second, on bills payment. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, bills are paid.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion, a second on adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
To this evening's city council meeting, Madam Clerk, could you please read the role?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrisey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Whopper?
Here.
All right, thank you. Right now, we have our moment of silence. So you have the option to stand or sit. We did have a funeral earlier today from one of our firefighters, Justin Junk. So if you can keep them, keep him in your thoughts as family. All right, thank you. This evening's pledge will be led by me. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of October ninth, twenty-seventeen, regular session as proposed. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. First up, first item is the proclamation declaring October fifteenth through the twenty-first as Character Counts Week. So if Bruce Clark, chairperson of Cedar Valley Character Counts, could please join me up front. All right, let's, let's try over here so we can, if you don't mind. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas citizens of good character are a most valuable asset to our community, providing a safe and caring environment where all citizens value and model the principle that character counts. And whereas the six pillars of character include trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And whereas the city of Waterloo supports the Cedar Valley Character Counts Committee in its efforts to provide leadership and coordination for the promotion and encouragement of a community-wide character education program for our youth. And whereas with their guidance, we will teach, enforce, advocate, and model the six essential pillars of character to our young citizens. And whereas this work will foster greater understanding and cooperation among individuals and organizations of our community to set good examples and address the positive issues that will shape our community's future. Now, therefore, I, Quinton Hart, mayor of the city of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of October fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, as Character Counts Week. So Bruce, tell us a little bit about everything.
Well, thank you very much. Our committee's mission statement is a little shorter than the proclamation, but basically we're, we're, our goal is to encourage and support the six pillars of character across the community. We collaborated with the University of Northern Iowa this past September on an ethics and social responsibility symposium, which Director Trecker was part of, I believe. And there was a hundred or so people that attended that from across the state. And then our big function for the year is our Champions in Character Dinner in April, where we recognize groups and individuals from across the Cedar Valley that, that provide great examples of the six pillars of character. Educators like Angela Whitmer and Merritt Beznar, Major David Richards from West High, and Ashley Reamer. Also organizations like the Green Center of Blackhawk County and the UNI Dance Marathon Group. And then businesses like Veridian Credit Union, young adult citizens like Jocelyn Marie Roof. And then adult citizens like Jack Ariman. And Jack was, was also recognized by Character Counts in Iowa at a big dinner in El Tuna where three hundred people heard his story along with lots of other stories. And then it was rebroadcast across the state so that people across the great state of Iowa heard about Jack's work with sportability camps and his work for, with young people that are having lower limb challenges. And so people across the state heard a great story of how, a great example of how character counts in Waterloo. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for your efforts. We appreciate it. Just holding up a standard to remind all of us about the responsibility that we have to model good behaviors to one another, but also to the children that are looking up to us as well. So thank you so much. All right. All right, now I would like to call up Paul as well as the Best Friendly City Bird by Friendly Iowa Steering Committee members. And Iowa, Waterloo has one of the first. So if you would please join us up front. There's enough room for everyone. This can get closer. I don't, I don't bite on Mondays. I may chirp, I may chirp a little bit, but. All right, who is?
I'm Doug Har, president of the Iowa Audubon Society. And before we make the official presentation to Waterloo tonight, I'm going to introduce Rick Zarwell, one of the co-founders of this new Bird Friendly Iowa program, to give just a short back history of it. Rick? Thanks, Doug. I just want to congratulate both the city of Waterloo and Prairie Rapids Audubon for going through with this project here. And also point out to you that this, this project has been under development for about two and a half years. We have five different nonprofit conservation organizations represented on our steering committee and four different agencies, local, state, and federal agencies. So it's been a team effort to create this program. We borrowed it actually from Wisconsin. There's a similar program in Wisconsin who, after seven years, have a hundred and one communities like Waterloo. Oh, the website said a hundred and one last night. Sorry, Francis. Okay, I don't get that. Okay, a lot of, over a hundred, okay? But this, but this is a unique program in Iowa. It really is special that, that you've gone forward here in our pilot project pushed by Todd Deerfield and, who's taking the pictures there, and Prairie Rapids Audubon. It's really a special program and we hope to exceed or reach a hundred or, and exceed that possibly as time goes on. We don't have a staff person yet. We're working on, on getting some money for a staff person to, you know, coordinate this program statewide. But Iowa has something like nine hundred and ninety communities, from cities to towns. A whole lot of opportunity out there. We think we've got more communities probably than Wisconsin has with all the trees they've got up there and lakes and stuff. So a little different situation down here. And this program was designed to meet the needs of Iowans. There's three main parts of the, of the program. First is to protect and restore and enhance habitat for, for birds, pollinators, and other biodiversity in, in the, in the communities. Then to eliminate threats to birds. And third is, is to, education programs to engage people in, in these kinds of pursuits. And birding is a, is a nice recreation. It's a non-consumptive use of resources. And a lot of people get a lot of good out of birds. So that's basically it. I encourage you to go to the website, www.birdfriendlyiowa.org. And the criteria is listed there that, that all the communities can, can address. And, and then they submit an application, online application. So it's a neat program. And again, congratulations to everybody involved here from Waterloo and especially Todd Deerfield and Prairie Rapids Audubon. So I'll turn it back to Doug. Thank you, Rick. Now, I would like to say on behalf of our steering committee, our partnership, conducting the new Bird Friendly Iowa program, I'm extremely pleased to designate the City of Waterloo as Iowa's first official bird-friendly city. And in honor of this first Iowa designation, I'd like to present Mayor Hart and the City Council with a recognition certificate. Also, committee members Patty Riesinger from Trees Forever, Bruce Haresman from Iowa DNR, have a flag here that will be presented to the city to fly wherever you would like to fly that or display it. And then Committee Member Carol Teeter from the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation and Rick here are holding a couple of the street signs that will be presented to the city, which we think would be best placed at a primary roadway entrance into the city so people can recognize the honor of this city being Iowa's first bird-friendly city. Now, you'll note that the flag and the sign feature our Bird Friendly Iowa Community logo, which is worded so that in the future, we can present these items to cities and towns of various sizes as well as other entities to which we hope to expand our program in the future. And then finally, I wish to present a special recognition certificate to Prairie Rapids Audubon, the local area chapter of the National Audubon Society, which is the nation's largest bird conservation organization. Prairie Rapids was essential in recommending Waterloo to us as our pilot city for Bird Friendly Iowa, working with Todd Deerfield and Paul Hudding to be sure that the city met all the criteria we established and even was honored to pay the application fee on behalf of the City of Waterloo. So, our sincere thank you goes to Prairie Rapids Audubon and its dedication to birds. They have the certificate here. Present that to Prairie Rapids Audubon. We're pleased and honored to have Waterloo be the first in the state, but we recognize also that this is a process. It fits right in with our Audubon chapter goals and mission statement. So, we select out of 30 different qualifications, seven is what we took. And we know that we're going to be working to make Waterloo better for birds, for yards, for bird-friendly yards, for our parks. And Waterloo's been tremendous in working with us to get this going, and we're anxious to set new goals, like keeping all cats indoors for one. It's one thing that we all agree on. And better habitat and educating the public of what you can do for your yards, for native species, and for making Waterloo even better than what it is right now. So, we really appreciate this opportunity and thank you.
I've got just a couple of comments. Waterloo agreed to partner with Prairie Rapids Audubon Society to receive this Bird Friendly City designation because protecting, restoring, and enhancing bird habitat fits closely with Waterloo's strategic plan, you know about the plan? To maintain and develop community services and city facilities that support quality of place. Our city forester, Todd Deerfield, who's hiding out there behind the shutter, deserves to be recognized for his efforts because he really did work hard on this. And achieving the first-in-the-state designation is really something that we are proud of, and we thank you for choosing us first. Conservation-related gains in Waterloo and the Cedar Valley will ultimately resort in better bird habitat. Better bird habitat leads to more opportunities for citizens to enjoy recreational opportunities of bird watching. So, thanks to the Bird Friendly Iowa Steering Committee for this award. And thank you to the Prairie Rapids Audubon Chapter for all you do in our community to promote birding and bird habitat. So, thank you.
Just real quickly, to our association, to the steering committee, to leisure services, thank you guys so much. What a great opportunity. And I think I'm hearing that there's also some room for improvement in what we do as well. So, this is an excellent start. We're absolutely proud, and thank you so much for the recognition. So, thank you. Yep, that'll be perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, it is now time for oral presentations. If you would please come up, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what's on your heart.
Randy Herd, 111 Highland Boulevard. We've been talking a lot in the last few months, few weeks, about bicycles here in Waterloo, and we're trying to make it a good place for bikes. And part of that is to make sure it goes safely. The other night, my wife and I and kids were having dinner out at crossroads, and as we came home, it had got dark. You couldn't see very well. You had to have your headlights on. And I came down across the river, up 18th Street towards Independence. And my street on Independence there, going north, there were no stop signs for me or signal lights or anything like that. Side streets had stop signs. So, you're going along, you're keeping aware of that. And then I noticed that a car also on Independence, or on Benton, I guess, was coming back my way. And it had come to the corner. And it appeared to be stopping, and there was no reason for it to stop. So, I'm curious. And I'm looking around, and then I notice in his headlights, the spokes of a bicycle being ridden right across, right square in front of him. I mean, it couldn't have been more than three feet in front of the car, and he had the right of way. So, I mean, right off the bat, you know, you start looking around, and on my right, on that side street, were two more bikes getting ready to come across the street. And there was a lot of traffic. And I guess what this leads me to is, I don't know which one it's for. Of course, it could be for Dan, but these bicycle riders, they were all young people, did not seem to be aware of the rules of riding on the street. And as we move ahead into this new era of bicycles in Waterloo, what are we doing to make sure that all bicycle riders, particularly the young ones, know what's going on and what the rules are that they have to adhere to? Because if not, especially at night like that, something's going to happen one of these nights, and that's not going to be good. I know the fire department has a really good training course for bicycle riders. I don't know if it's put on anymore or not, but it used to be. We had it over in Church Row a few years ago. But I would like to find out if there is such a program and how are we teaching the kids about this. And one other question for the new, the new paths for bike over on Park, is there a definition of age for that? I mean, I'm old, so I can go down and use that stuff, but what about, how young is a kid going to be before they have to have an adult with them going down that street? Because what we're doing is we're telling them, you had every right to ride on the road. So, I'm just curious about if there is an age limit on it, too.
I'm not sure of it being an age limit. I haven't heard that one yet. And Pat, Pat is not here tonight with regards to fire. Tough day for them, so I can have him give you a call in the morning to talk to you about that.
It doesn't have to be right away, when he's free.
Okay, okay, will do.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. This basically has to do with the bill's payment and/or travel requests. And it's a question about how, the wording on it, as an example, it says there's 495, and I think there's, I don't know how many people are going. Is that for one person or for the whole program? The same thing with some of these others. The first one said something about, we've got three guys going, or two guys going at $248 or something. Is that for one person or two? Because I spent a few minutes looking on the board, and it sort of indicates it's for one. So, if that's, the figure is 248, it should be 500, or what? I just would like to have a clarification on that. Thank you.
That's for both, if I'm not mistaken. And then each, each one, each one where it says amount not to exceed is for the entire group.
For the entire group. Okay, thank you.
Is anyone that would like to address the council?
Good evening. Dale Carroll, 130 Tribal Road, out in Cedar Terrace area. I just found out today that you, item number four, they ordered a contract for St. Crete Channel Cleanout and Shaping.
Is this in regards to number four?
Yes, it is.
So, what I'll do, I'll call you back up when we get to that number.
All right.
All right, I'll get you right back up here. But the oral presentation is non-agenda-related items. I'll let Mr. Sherbin go because there's really no conversation about the consent, so, all right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council, going a second time?
Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive. My comments are in regards to the meeting last week. I'd like to start off by saying that, you know, once again, we do have, we have a court case that's being brought on Sunnyside South, and so we're backing the courts on that. Last week, we were told that one of the problems with the city is that we don't trust the city experts enough. The city experts have been heavily involved for the last six years. In fact, Mr. Nagel was laughed at when he came up here and asked for fair market value for Sunnyside South six years ago. And that was from experts. Like I say, experts can have differences of opinion, and they should be able to express those differences of opinion and not be talked down, shouted down, intimidated down. What I saw at last week's meeting, I saw council members being interrupted by other council members without having the floor. I saw assignments of motivations that no one could possibly know. And I don't think it's condescending to question the omniscience of the city council, of the city staff. In fact, I find it condescending that this idea of omniscience is passed along, and we should just go along without questioning. One of the things that's been happening here lately is that there hasn't been open discussion. There hasn't been discussion in public about various issues. These conversations need to be taken in public. Item that's on the agenda, I won't comment to at this time. I have, I have my own opinions on it. But my opinion doesn't necessarily mean it's the right opinion. I need to hear from other people and get their input. When we're not listening to people that don't quite have the same outlook as ourselves, we lose the opportunity to find the right decision, to find the right solution to the problem. Public safety is very important, and it should not be an emotional decision, and it should not be a decision that's made through whoever can speak the loudest or the hardest. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council, I am requesting a work session. The last number of years, I have been working on a potential new revenue source for the city. I've been going to bring it to you different times. I was going to try and bring it to you this summer if I could, but was unable to make that happen. So, I am requesting, as soon as possible, I would like to have a work session in regards to this issue, possibly 15, 20 minutes, explain the program.
Thank you, Mr. Whopper. All right, we'll get that scheduled.
With that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file oral comments.
Second. The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's items 1A through B, 2D. And within that are the bill's payment. Bill's payment this week are $2,930,997.2. That's 2, 930, 997.02.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda carries. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the lease agreement with Holly Porter for property located west of 903 Riverside Drive for $1 for a term ending December 31st, 2027.
Second. The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda, going a second time? Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with Holly Porter for property located west of 903 Riverside Drive for $1 for a term ending December 31st, 2027, and authorizing Mayor and City Clerk to execute said documents.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I did get a call, if, if, I don't know, Noel would want to talk about it, but just during this term, if for some reason, we had an opportunity to do something with this land, is there an escape clause on this 10-year lease, or how does that work?
See Eric out there. No?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. There's always some escape wording in there. Just as a note, though, this is a FEMA buyout property, so it is deed restricted. So, we really, and it's in the floodway, our floodplain and floodway portions. So, we really have no other uses for this other than open space, green space.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lind.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the recycling processing facility to support the City of Waterloo's curbside recycling program.
Second. The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item? I see at the end, it's postponed for a week to allow further review, but if there's anyone that has comments about this particular item at this time, please come to the podium, going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. The motion has been made with a double second. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to postpone reading of bids for one week to allow further review by interim public works director.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Could someone take number four?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and- I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on the fiscal year twenty eighteen Sink Creek Channel Cleanout and Shaping Contract, number nine two four.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone, Mr. Carroll? Batter's up.
Dale Carroll again, one thirty Tribal Road, Waterloo. You know, we've been working with the city on this for, well, basically since two thousand eight. And one thing, I would do wanna thank the former city council and mayor and the present mayor and city council for everything they've done and trying to do. And also the engineers and everybody else that's been involved in this and AECOM also. I don't live along the creek, so I didn't receive this notice that was sent September twenty-second. So I really didn't know about this until today. I'm, I'm very happy that they're doing something with it. I'm a little disappointed that they couldn't get the Army Corps of Engineers to allow them to straighten the creek out more. We think it would've helped quite a bit, quite a bit more than what's gonna happen. But what's gonna happen is gonna help a lot too, which, you know, we appreciate, appreciate. I don't know if there's any way, we tried in the past to get the county. I've been to supervisor meetings and it didn't seem to do any good. If there's, I don't know if the, if the mayor has been able to communicate better than it has been in the past with the county. I know part of this that the city is paying for is in the county. And we really, like I said, I appreciate the city took this on. Cause a lot, I didn't get flooded, but a lot of my neighbors got flooded. And it also affected people in, over in Shawless and Folk Road, Cedar, I mean, it isn't just that little plot of ground where we're at. I guess I'd like to know if there's, well, one thing I'd like to know is Mr. Bellows owns some property where they were actually gonna straighten it out. And when they left it at the first stage, they cut the trees and got the brush and everything out of there. They didn't seed Mr. Bellows' land and it's kinda gone to very prolific, noxious weeds and stuff. And in this program here, I was wondering if they are gonna tear that all up, since they're not gonna reroute it through his land. Are they gonna tear up what's presently there and reseed it to something that's more manageable? And I guess I understand that there was nothing I could've done to help with the Army Corps of Engineers except for, cause it would've cost quite a bit more money. So like I said, I appreciate it. Is there anything we can, about the seeding on Mr. Bellows' property that would, yeah. Cause it would help out some neighbors that are adjoining to his property, cause they're getting a lot of varmints and stuff. And like I said, there's a terrible amount of weeds, thistles and stuff in there.
Well, you bring up an excellent, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't know.
Well, you bring up an excellent point, because I would like to take a look at seeding, not just there, but along some of our streets. You know, some of the weeds and different things we have, policy that we have in place. It, it's more expensive, but I mean, having good-looking streets and good-looking areas is highly important. But then if you wanna comment on the seeding portion of it, or is there current, are there currently plans to, to deal with the, the seeding?
Dennis Gents, Assistant City Engineer. And personally, I'm not that familiar with the plans. Possibly Doug Schindel here with AECOM might be able to comment on that.
You bet. Doug Schindel with AECOM. And the project does include seeding and erosion control along the entire, it's about two thousand feet, I think. Just around eighteen hundred feet from Cedar Terrace downstream to where it hits the, the field downstream of the subdivision. So this project will go ahead and clean out the channel and straighten up the slopes, in addition to the seeding and erosion control. And I, Mr. Carroll's right, we did talk a little bit about that in terms of the Army Corps of Engineers permit. And it's not that they wouldn't have permitted it, it just would've taken a lot of time and a, and a lot more expense on the city's part due to the stream shortening and the habitat and the monitoring that would've been required if we would've went through the permitting process. In addition to archaeological review of the area where we're gonna go through on a channel relocation, so. It's not that they wouldn't have permitted, it just would've taken more time and, and I think it's best in terms of the biggest bang for our buck to go in and clean out the channel and, and get it into shape as, as soon as possible.
So these folks have been waiting for about nine years, it's time to, to take care of and to help them as much as we can.
We've had a lot, lots of council members came out and you.
Yeah.
I guess the only part I was thinking about is Mr. Bellows' property is quite a big area, cause they use it for, for running the machinery back and forth on. So they kinda, like I said.
So Mr. Carroll, can you and Doug have a conversation?
Yes, sir.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. Love discussion. If you two wanna have a conversation, can you let him know exactly what's, what's going on and he can maybe address it?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda?
That's the guy that got me, got me involved in unions.
Richard Smuck, nine twenty-five Bell Street. I've lived out there, I bought my house out there forty-eight years ago. I got a mortgage from Home Savings and Loan, and I didn't have to have flood insurance. The Cedar River's there, two blocks away. I didn't have to have flood insurance. Now, if I sell my house to someone, that person's gonna have to have flood insurance at nineteen hundred dollars a year because of Sink Creek. Cause when I moved out there, all that development out there wasn't there. And all that runoff comes down through Sink Creek. So now, the property value's still up there, my property taxes keep going up, but the market value of my home goes down because of Sink Creek and the flood insurance. And that's because of all the development up there, and the development's gonna continue. There's two projects up there they're thinking about now for crying out loud. And so, there's nothing being done. And that's one of the big deals, but like when I moved out there, Sink Creek was kinda not right in my backyard, but on Bellows' property, there was a wooden bridge with a twelve-inch culvert. Took the drainage from Sink Creek from all south, all the way down through. I checked tonight before I came down and there's five forty-eight inch culverts there now to take care of the drainage from all this up there. And when all that water comes down and the river's up, we get, we get the flooding in the basements and everything else. It's from Sink Creek. So we'd like to, you could straighten the creek out and get something done so that it would go to the river. Is what has to be done, but this, just clean it, clean the trees out and do a little thing here. But this year's been great. Got a drought, we had not even rain, we don't have anything. It's great, can't beat it. Drop my, drop my flood insurance. If you don't do that, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the, the council? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
So this is probably a question for Mr. Schindel again, but you know, if we dial back a few years, Councilman Lynn, I think Councilman Morrissey maybe, and Councilman Jacobs and I spent a little bit of time out in that neighborhood. And as I remember, I think within the last couple of years, the city's already spent hundred thousand dollars. In conjunction with some of the property owners out there cleaning up some of the brush and trees and, and stuff out of there. But I thought I was told that until the county participates and helps at the bottom end of Sink Creek, what we're doing is really probably not the best spending of tax dollars, because we're not fixing the problem. I mean, we're making it better, but we're not fixing the problem. And to fix the problem, the county's gotta get involved. And so far, I believe Mr. Carroll and some of his neighbors have gone to the county and the county board of supervisors doesn't seem to wanna listen to him. Is that a, is that a fair assessment, or am I missing something?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it, we're agreeing about it.
Okay.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think from, in terms of the, the overall plan for Sink Creek, that we've had a study out there for twenty years or so. And I think to do the hundred-year type flood protection, which would get the folks out of the hundred-year flood plain, that is the extensive project that would involve the county in it, and in an overflow channel that would take a lot of the flood flows from Sink Creek kinda in a shorter direction to the overflow route to the, to the Cedar River. So ultimately, that, that's the, the overall plan for Sink Creek. But I think we discussed, you know, that's a multimillion dollar plan that would do that hundred-year improvement. So in the interim, we wanted to do some maintenance improvements in the, in the channel. And that's what we did last year with the tree clearing, and there were several obstructions when we walked the channel. You'll remember, there's some folks that had dumped debris in the channel and we cleaned that out. And then this project this year, that we're gonna try to do this fall here, that you're acting on tonight, will actually improve it additionally for flow through the, the channel. It won't be a hundred-year type improvement, like we're talking about, that will need to get the county involved. But it, it definitely will help with the, the more frequent type rainfall events to, to get water through that area.
Have you had any conversations with the county? Is, is the board of supervisors, have they talked about this that you're, that you're aware of? I mean, have they talked to you at all?
I have not.
Thank you.
Dennis, Dennis, you know of any conversations? Is that a Eric question? Okay. Alright, Doug, the, the project that we currently have on the council agenda, if the county joins in to whatever the project, how does this set with that? Does this disrupt? Do we have to undo what we've done? But how, how does this hundred thousand that we're going to spend tonight? I'm hearing it's going to help dramatically, but it won't solve every issue. Is this part of the process to get there, or?
Yeah, you know, I think, I think it'll help with the, the more frequent type flooding events. It'll definitely help. I don't think it's a, a waste of taxpayers' dollars necessarily. And I think it'll help with the, the year, the two-year type rainfall events that, that could cause flooding in, in the area. But the hundred-year, you know, it's not the permanent solution for the overall hundred-year stormwater development plan for that area or for Sink Creek on that Lower Sink Creek study.
So, so if we wanted to have some dialogue with the county, cause we got some work that we need to do right now. But if we wanted to have some dialogue with the county, you can set that up so that some staff and folks, we can sit down and have a conversation to address these folks' concerns?
Sure. We'd be happy to help set that up, and I think you're right. I think it's a long, long-term plan. And there's nothing that we do now that'll prevent that. And it actually ties in, you know, pretty well to the county and, and what the agricultural land downstream has done with the, with the drainage way. It ties into that on the downstream side of the development.
Okay, yeah, cause I'm, I think I'm hearing that they've addressed their concerns with them already. But maybe we need to have a little intergovernmental conversation as well, so, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jacobs.
So if we could, with that meeting, if we could ensure that council was invited to that meeting, that would be fantastic. Because this really, this is a Band-Aid and I understand that. So anything that's gonna help, that would be great, but it just doesn't alleviate the flooding. It doesn't alleviate the, the flood insurance issue that we have. So we need more cooperation with the county, so we really need to kinda push that, since they're not wanting to lead the way on this. We actually do need to push to make sure that we all cooperate, work together on this.
The challenge, it'll end up being a double quorum.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we can have inner governmental decision-making. Let me, let's think about it, about how to best do that to make sure council is absolutely aware of every step of the way without, we'll work it out.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got, I got a question for probably Doug, but is there reap money? Is there federal, potential federal grand dollars to help push this project forward?
Not that we've been aware of for stormwater projects, generally. It's a local.
Stormwater is a big problem in terms of getting money. Right?
We have some, yeah, it is. It truly is. We have some other issues. Even though we've been successful on, on some stormwater pump station grants that, that we've received in, in the past for Dryron Creek and Blowers, for channel improvement projects are generally locally funded projects.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we closed the hearing, sir. Do you have a quick comment? Cause I know I'll, I'll get, you know what, if I, if I allow this, I will, I will be in a whole lot of trouble.
I was making a short. Ron Crowls, eleven, nine forty-one Bell. They talked about a hundred-year plan. Let's stop the development on the other side of the highway, so we have a little secure from the water.
Thank you, sir. Alright, council, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Mr.
The base bid and alternate bid estimate was one hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Our first bidder was Dave Schmidt Construction of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Second bidder was Vith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred and thirty-two thousand, twenty-three dollars. Third bidder was Peterson Contractors of Rhinebeck, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. The next bidder was Baker Concrete and Excavating of Waverly, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Our final bidder was Lodge Construction of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Alright, thank you. Before we go on, I wanna apologize to the city council for allowing someone to speak past the hearing portion of that. So my fault on that. Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a ward of bid to Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa in the amount of one hundred thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year twenty eighteen Sink Creek Channel Cleanout and Shaping Contract, number nine twenty-four, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Alright, item carries. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And that is a request by the Islamic Foundation of Iowa Incorporated to rezon approximately eight point two five acres from M dash two P Planned Industrial District to VP Business Park District located west of twenty-ten West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone, Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor. Before I make a motion to close the hearing, I did receive an email from an individual, and I don't know what that should be, it's supposed to be public record.
If it is, probably wanna send that to us.
Okay.
You get it to Kelly.
No, I did not. I just, I just received it right before.
Yeah, so do you wanna, you wanna let us know the, what's the?
Would you like to hear what it says?
A little bit about what it is.
I can read it to you as far as what the individual said. Just give me a second here to pull it up. And I'll read it just for the record, I guess, is what I'll do.
We don't have anywhere else to be.
Okay. Let me find it here, hold on. Take me a second here. And this is from an individual, should I give his name for the record?
He sent it to you, it is public record.
Okay, this is from an individual, his name is David Starr. And in this email, he says, "Please vote no. I am urging you to vote against the rezoning of eight point two five acres from industrial to business park on West Ridgeway Avenue. Please educate yourself on what is behind the Islamic Foundation before allowing it to become a..." Please educate yourself on what is behind the Islamic Foundation before allowing it to become a reality. I would encourage you to look on the internet for Shahram Hadi, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correct. Born in Iran and raised in the Muslim teachings, who has turned Christian and is now a pastor trying to educate people on what the underlying goals are of Islam. His web address is www.tilproject.com and is very eye-opening. I had no idea. Please consider at least tabling this issue until your council can do some homework. Thank you, M. Starr." So I have read it into the record and I did do a little research on it. I didn't find anything alarming, so if someone else wants to look at it, that's fine, but.
All right, all right, well, just put the comments right now and then afterwards, you can comment if you want to. Anyone else? All in favor? Wait, wait, wait.
I need to make a motion.
Yes, you do.
Motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendations for the, of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-seventy-nine as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten-dash-four-dash-four approving a rezon of certain property located west of twenty-ten West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can we have a little overview from Mr. Anderson about where this?
Mr. Anderson.
Specifically is that for the audience at home?
Location.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. The location, if you were heading west on Ridgeway, you would pass by Denzo. You would pass by the earth being moved for the new Quick Star Fuel Facility. Then there'd be a little bit of field, a little bit of trees. And then there is a fenced location where they have built a soccer field and fenced it. So that is the location of the request. The request in question, they are looking to rezon it to allow for a daycare facility. The industrial zoning classification does not allow for that as a standalone, but the BP does. BP is very similar to the M-two-P industrial with the exception of allowing for the daycare-type facility. So we think it's a compatible use to the area. They are asking for a phased project. The first phase is the daycare facility. A second phase would be a gym and a third phase would be a school on the site. We did not have any negative impacts that we showed. All utilities serve the site except for sewer, which they would be installing a septic system designed to handle all three phases of the project. And staff did recommend approval of the project.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, council? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Time this.
Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I'm not aware of any urgency to this, so there may be representatives here in the audience that could give you a better answer to that.
Are you, any of the representatives, do you need to have this project done before the winter or you want to get started right away? All right. Any more questions? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item will be brought back up again next week for the second and/or third reading. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number six is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing. That's for the project addendum to agreement for residential housing construction with Hawkeye Community College authorizing the sale and conveyance of lots twelve and thirteen of Block One of Manson's second addition to Hawkeye Community College.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Can I ask again?
Oh, you want to close a second time? There's nobody up there.
Oh, Jane was gonna get up. In that case, Mayor, we'll close the hearing, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the project addendum to agreement for residential housing construction and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to say that it's certainly been great working with Jane and her staff out of Hawkeye Community College. You know, whether you're at the college or I'm sitting up here, I'm hoping this program goes on for many years. And I appreciate how this friendship that we've now developed between Hawkeye and the city of Waterloo.
All right, thank you, Mr. Whopper. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain tracts of land known as lots twelve and thirteen in Block One of Manson's second addition in accordance with a project addendum to the agreement for the residential housing construction with Hawkeye Community College authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, madam clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on asbestos abatement services for two-twenty-two Walnut Street. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open, madam clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive, to close the hearing. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed. Second.
That motion's been made with the second, madam clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive and file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids? Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, madam clerk, read the bids, please.
The estimate for this was five thousand, five hundred dollars. Our first bidder was AAA Budget Environmental Incorporated of Monticello, Iowa. Their bid was actually rejected because they submitted it for the incorrect project. The second bidder was Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was three thousand, four hundred dollars. The second bid was Echo Midwest Incorporated of Hastings, Minnesota. Excuse me, that's the third bid. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Our final bid was Active Thermal Concepts of Hiawatha, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution awarding asbestos abatement services bid to Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of three thousand, four hundred dollars for asbestos removal services at two-twenty-two Walnut Street and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance and instruct the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, madam clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Someone take eight, nine, and ten, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number eight, a resolution approving a permanent easement agreement of Quick Trip Inc. For the purpose of allowing a storm sewer easement on city property located west of twenty-ten West Ridgeway Avenue and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement. Number nine is a resolution approving the naming of a private street located north of ten-twenty-seven East Fourth Street as Robie Lane and rescinding resolution number twenty-seventeen-dash-two-one-zero for the naming of a private street serving ten-twenty-seven East Fourth Street as Robie Lane due to an error in description. And number ten is a resolution approving award of hotel motel tax council discretionary funds to leisure services for an event shuffle in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred dollars. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor? Could Paul tell us where, or somebody could tell us where that shuffle goes to? I assume it's going to Young Arena?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. We've worked with the TechWorks management and they've allowed us to use the TechWorks lot. So that's the place that people will park and then it does shuttle back and forth to Young Arena.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, item carries, eleven and twelve.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving professional services, professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa in an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars for WWTP Final Clarifier Dewatering, Well Evaluation, and Design Services and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number twelve is a resolution approving notice of intent for NPDES coverage under general permit to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for fiscal year 2018 Saint Creek Channel Cleanout and Shaping Contract Number Nine Twenty-Four and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Thank you, that motion has been made with the second, council questions? Madam Clerk? Oh, anyone questions about this? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thirteen and fourteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Whopper?
Number thirteen is a resolution terminating the parking easement agreement with US Bank National Association dated March second, two thousand and nine. Filed as December, no, document, excuse me, number two-zero-zero-nine-dash-one-six-four-four-seven for property located west of four-twenty-five Cedar Street and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute all necessary documents. Number fourteen is a resolution approving an encroachment agreement with FDP WTC LLC to allow for a monument sign to encroach into the public right-of-way of Westfield Avenue as part of the courtyard by Marriott at Tet Works Project, two-five-zero Westfield Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council questions or anyone? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item carries, number fifteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion, receive, file, and consider and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending the two thousand and eight traffic code by rescinding section five-four-three through streets and deleting in its entirety subsection six, Ainsborough Avenue, inserting a new subsection six, Ainsborough Avenue. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with any discussion on this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Thank you, number sixteen, please. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the two thousand eight traffic code by amending section five forty-four dash always stop intersections by adding subsection thirty-six Shawless Road at Ainsborough Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm going to be voting no on this today for the simple fact that I'm waiting for some new numbers to be given to me this following week.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Also, I'm going to be noting, voting no on this motion, and again, I would just, uh, request the counsel step back on this and, uh, do a little bit more thorough review. I've gotten all kinds of calls and emails about this and, and one has been supporting the idea of making that a four-way stop and everybody else says, stop and take a look at the big picture, stop and take a look at, at putting up stop signs for the bike trail, stop and take a look at putting stop signs on Ainsborough but taking them off Shawless. I think there's just way too little studies gone into this, so just wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Powers?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. Take this up next week. All right, number seventeen, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, uh, consider an appeal of Main Street Design Board's decision by American Legion Post number one-thirty-eight for replacement of roof located at seven-twenty-eight Commercial Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., uh, because I need a little bit of clarity.
I'm Terry Breckie, twenty-three, twenty-five Westview Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa. Uh, I tried to get some clarification on what this item was last week and I tried with a couple of different sources and, and didn't get any clarification. And so, uh, right now we're appealing something which I don't know what, what it is. And I'm a representative of the board of trustees of the Legion, I guess. I feel that we can make a decision on what the roof is without outside help. I have invited Mr. Hall from Main Street Group to join our trustee meeting on Wednesday for his input. But, uh, that's where I stand on it.
All right, thank you. Um, so yeah, we have a representative, uh, not clear, but has a meeting set up with, um, Main Street Director to try to have some conversation on what are the next steps, how to do it. So, Mr. Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, um, I think there's a bunch of confusion. And the reason I wanted to bring this back and keep it on the agenda, because in talking with several people at the Legion, what this allows them to do is to get a metal roof on that building for sure. And if they decide they don't want a metal roof and they want a gold roof, then they'll go back to Main Street, um, to present that plan again to them. But if we, if we overturn Main Street's decision tonight and allow them to have their metal roof, then at least they have something in hand. At least they're assured that they can put a roof in that building. The one, the one they wanted. That's the only reason I wanted to put this on the, uh, agenda. I didn't want to put it on, the American Legion wanted to put it on the agenda. But that's what we're doing tonight. We're saying, okay, American Legion, you had three designs, a real expensive metal roof, a less expensive metal roof, and a, a metal roof like the bank next door. That's what was rejected. And what we're trying to say tonight is allow them to have the same roof that the bank right next door has. With Mr. Mayor?
Dog dores.
Well, I, I, this is, um, something that I think, it's, it's been such a long time that this should be going back to the Main Street, uh, Design Review Board, um, and see what they have to say about it. And it, it sounds like one of the representatives is suggesting just that, so I just, I think this should be tabled until such time as we get something back from the, uh, Main Street Design Board and meeting with the American Legion people.
Yeah, th- there's a, a, a little bit of confusion as Mr., uh, Lynn had indicated and what Mr. Breckie had indicated too. Um, I don't have a vote, but it would probably, um, be better served to kind of take a step back, at least for now. Allow him to, uh, him and, uh, the other gentleman, uh, the other chair, is it Hoffman, sir? Is it Mr. Hoffman to have a conversation with, um, uh, Main Street and come up with some ideas, some suggestions? Um, and because it seems like now that, uh, what's, was on the agenda is different than what actually went to Main Street. And so just to clear up some, um, confusion maybe, um, I'm thinking it may be better to take a step back, at least for right now. But I also hear the urgency, uh, of Mr. Lynn to make sure that this continues to move forward. But, um, it's up to counsel. And Kelly, you have any comments?
Um, just that I received an email on Sunday stating that, um, part of the proposal was to have a asphalt roof, which would be opposite of what was reviewed by Main Street. And therefore, if the plans are for an asphalt roof, the council can't take action on an appeal at this point in time. The roof design, if it's changed from what went to Main Street prior, would have to be voted upon by Main Street. And if it was denied by Main Street, at that point in time, council could take action to overturn for an appeal.
So we'll hear this gentleman's comments and then we'll see legally where we're at. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Grimm, forty-six, forty-six William Drive. I have two on the trustee on the board for the American Legion. We do have a temporary roof on there now that's been put on. Uh, it has pretty much stopped all of the leaks. We're in the process of, of remodeling the inside. Hopefully, it's not going to leak anymore. But we are significantly short of money and that's part of where we're looking at to come to you to get assistance with, uh, what we're trying to get accomplished here. We're going to have to replace some of the, uh, roofing materials. Some of the rafters themselves are starting to rot. Uh, the roof was in much worse condition than we'd originally thought when we purchased the building, when we were, uh, asked to move out from K-DW-L's parking lot now. So, uh, what we're looking at doing is getting by as cheaply as we can and yet have a permanent solution to our problems. And that's kind of why we're coming to you guys to ask for assistance. We do have a meeting on Wednesday at nine o'clock in the morning. If anybody would like to come to that meeting with the trustees, uh, you're more than welcome to come and sit down and listen to what, what's being proposed.
Yep, and they can sit and listen if you have more than four. Um, but, um, they, no action can be taken. But I, I think, um, I think there would be a pretty decent conversation because, um, you know, throughout this past year or so, probably going back to what, to February of two thousand sixteen, uh, there's been a little, you know, angst, but, um, I'm thinking now is the right time with Main Street, with the Legion, to kind of put something together, um, to, to make it work. So that's what I'm optimistic.
We want to work with you guys too. I mean, that's our whole intention.
Yeah, I had a conversation, um, after spoke with Mr., um, Breckie with Main Street representative as well. So I'm hoping we can go ahead and get this thing taken care of so next spring you'll be able to, to get what you need to have. But also, uh, find the resources to be able to do it, so I'm, I'm optimistic.
Thank you.
All right. So there's a item on the agenda that I don't believe we're legally able to do anything with right now. How do we get out of this?
Mr. Mayor, can a motion, oh.
I'm talking to the clerk and the city attorney. Is he, are you still in the building? We'll get you to the room now.
Dave Zeller for city attorney. I think the appropriate thing to do here would be to table it. We don't want to do anything that's not legal. Uh, if it has to go to the Design Review Committee first, it sounds like that can get done this week. Time is of the essence. There's no doubt about that. We need to move this along with the winter coming. But at the same time, we need to do it right and we need to do it legally and get all the people together with the brains and the money and figure this out. And I don't think a week is going to hurt. I would rather have this done once and done correctly. Done once and done correctly than, uh, incorrectly. Thank you.
So right now, table indefinitely because I also, I know there's a, they're meeting on Wednesday. And then just say, for instance, if there is some type of change or proposal, the Design Review Board, uh, does not meet until, I believe, November first. And then after they would take some action, then it would end up back at the council if there was a change to appeal or no resolution could be met. So.
Yeah, you really can't have an appeal until the design is looked at by everybody and denied by the Design Review Committee. And if there was an asphalt roof that's being put forth today, that isn't what was put forth before. So that has to go back to the Design Review Committee and we have to do that part right. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
With, with that having been said, I'd like to just make a motion to, uh, table this until after the Design Review Board, uh, meetings have taken place.
I'm just wondering how we can table, uh, motion that shouldn't even be a motion in the first place. It's like tabling air or something. It's like, but is that, so Mr. Zeller for and, and the city clerk?
Yeah, there are many reasons to table motions and, uh, you could, you could say it was made in air or you could say that it was untimely. But, uh, as long as everyone agrees and tables it, we'll be fine. Or I meant a majority, rather, excuse me. It doesn't have to be everyone, but make a motion to table indefinitely or however time you'd like it to be, Mr. Morrissey. Just get a second, vote on it, and we'll all be fine.
Well, make a motion to table this indefinitely.
I'll second that then.
Motion's been made with the second. Questions on the tabling?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I will abstain as a member of the Legion.
Okay, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I didn't hear that. You have, you're abstaining?
I'm going to abstain as a member of the Legion.
Do I have to abstain if I'm a member, Mr. Zeller?
I think so.
If either of you is going to receive any financial benefit from this, you would. Uh, I don't think we're talking that right now. What we're talking about is, uh, a roof design. Uh, we're not talking money changing hands, anything like that, so I don't believe there's any need to abstain.
Okay.
Uh, I, if you feel uncomfortable, by all means, but I don't believe legally you need to abstain.
Okay.